Gumbertale City Economic Development Corporation will meet in a regular board meeting in the Gumbertale City Council Chambers located at 1720 West Main Street, Gumbertale City, Texas 75156 on Wednesday, June 15th at 5:00 PM. Roll call from my left.
Osborne here.
Slenderlin here.
Lindeman here.
Schiff here.
Damiano here.
Butler here.
Witten here.
Everybody stand for the invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We gather today with the intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. We meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all the members of the community fairly and to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and to the future and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. We also take time to be thankful to those who serve our community, our fire and police departments along with our city staff and city employees, while never forgetting those who serve in our armed forces to secure our freedom. Tonight we especially ask for good wishes and quick recoveries to those affected on our own EDC board and staff. Jim Osborne recently suffered the loss of his home. Keith Butler, who will face uncertainty with an operation that may ultimately affect his current way of life. And finally, Dawn Yarborough, who was involved in a motorcycle accident over the past weekend and is still in the hospital entirely recovering. May our efforts tonight be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters that are before us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we had the roll call and we established a quorum. Before we get started on the agenda, there's a couple of things that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention. First of all, I wanted to thank Mike Hal for stepping in tonight since Dawn's in the hospital to help us with the AV connect. Thank you very much. Really appreciate that. Also, wanted to take the opportunity to formally introduce to the rest of the board our two interns. Guys, if you want to step up, come on up. These are our two interns. Alex, Alec, right? And also Cameron?
No.
Carson. Carson, I was close.
Close.
See how well I...
Come on, it sleeps all the time.
See how well I know them? These guys are working diligently along with Holland and working on enhancing the EDC website for the time being. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody who has not had the opportunity to meet them has the opportunity to know who they are. I also asked them to attend so they could get a little education into exactly what the EDC board does and how we operate. So I think on behalf of the board, I want to welcome you guys to come. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to do is I wanted to take the opportunity to formally thank a couple of people in our community that are doing basically work that's over and beyond and in helping the EDC to really promote itself in a way that it's never been promoted before. So there are two certificates of appreciation tonight that I would like to present. The first one I'd like to present is to Mike Horton for his dedication in helping the Gumbertale City Economic Development Corporation on all its related projects. Mike has been very instrumental in helping me to make sure that I'm following as many of the rules as I care to follow. No, he's helping me to follow all the rules that are applicable. Plus, he's also very instrumental and always there to help us to make sure that our needs are being taken care of in the best way. So Mike, if you want to come up, I'd like to give this award to you, the certificate of appreciation.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Speech, speech.
The second appreciation word that I'd like to give to a member of our community is to Paul Guilford. Paul has, those of you that are really watching our website, watching the development of some of our projects, Paul has really done a really outstanding job by providing the website and providing our Facebook page with some incredible aerial footage of all of our projects that are being done. Paul stepped up, walked into the EDC one day and said, "How can I help?" And I said, "What do you do?" And he came in with his drone. He showed me all about it. I told him, "Please don't take it out of the box." I was a little nervous. But Paul has done a really outstanding job. If you guys want to really see something that's spectacular, go to our Facebook page and then also go to the Gumbertale City website under the EDC and see some of the work that is being done by Paul. So Paul, I'd like to give you the certificate of appreciation for your photographic expertise in helping our citizens in Gumbertale City witness the economic development projects from a completely different perspective. So Paul, if you'd come up and accept this award, a certificate of appreciation, it'd be great. Thank you. Thank you. All right, now we can move on. Next part is for citizens' presentations, limited to three minutes. This item provides the opportunity for citizens to address the EDC Board of Directors in any manner, whether it's posted on the, posted or not on the agenda. However, in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.041, the EDC Board of Directors cannot discuss, deliberate, or take action on matters not listed on the agenda. At this time, the board will receive citizen comments if necessary, may refer the matter to EDC staff for research, resolution, or referral to the EDC board on a future agenda. I have no request for citizens' presentation, so we'll move on from there. Item number one, discuss or take action to approve the EDC minute meetings, yeah, the EDC meeting minutes of May 3rd and also the special meeting minutes of May 19th. Those are included in your packet. Anybody wants to make a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes of May 3rd through 16 and special meeting of May 19th through 2016.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Slenderlin, yes.
Lindeman, yes.
Schiff, yes.
Damiano, yes.
Butler, yes.
Witten, yes.
Passes. Item number two, discuss or take action to approve the April 2016 Gumbertale City EDC Month and Financial Reports. Holland, anything different in there?
No, everything is, you know, correct to the best of my knowledge.
Excellent.
Reflects to our budget.
Everybody has a copy of those financials? They've had a copy of the financials? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the April 2016 Gumbertale City EDC Month and Financial Reports for Mr. Witten.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Slenderlin, yes.
Lindeman, yes.
Yes.
Damiano, yes.
Butler, yes.
Witten, yes.
Motion passes. Item number three, discuss or take action to receive an updated report on the landscaping project for the skate park between the Gumbertale City Beautification Committee and the Gumbertale City Economic Development Corporation. I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on what's transpiring at the skate park. If you haven't been down there recently, I urge you to go down there. Construction is closing very, very quickly now that we had, we have a significant break in the weather. I was down there today and it's, and it's really moving along. The Gumbertale City Beautification Committee was given the task of helping us to utilize the $10,000 that was given to us by the Rotary Club as a donation to come up with a landscaping scheme for, for the skate park. And I know that Barbara's been working with a couple of local landscapers and will be in a position to discuss this at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Gary, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, my understanding, Monica and I took a run out to Jake's skate park in Malacca. Took some pictures. The beautification committee's taking a look at those pictures. A couple of things came to light that maybe we're going to need some shade out there, benches and a few other things, but they're working on it. The next step, I think, is for the EDC to have a meeting with the beautification committee.
All right. Any other detail?
Not this time.
Okay. Can I get a motion to receive the report, the updated report? No?
I move, I move that we receive the updated report on the landscaping project for the skate park between GBC Beautification and GBC EDC.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Slenderlin, yes.
Lindeman, yes.
Schiff, yes.
Damiano, yes.
Butler, yes.
Witten, yes.
Motion passes. Item number four, discuss or take action to approve an expenditure not to exceed $3,000 for the implementation of the ADA required parking spots and ADA access to the Gumbertale City Skate Park. So I had a meeting with Marty Mullins, who pointed out that the skate park needs to be ADA accessible. And quite honestly, the first, my first reaction to that was I didn't know that, you know, handicap people would be using the skate park. And then I watched a ton of videos where we have a lot of people who have had injuries that are still capable of working and riding on a skate park, whether it's the, the kids that are, that have been injured or something has happened, or the parents that are disabled that want to come and watch their kids in the skate park. So Marty put together a game plan for us that's going to, what we're going to do is we're going to, you know, Mike, why don't you come up and help me with this since you're here? You know, the asphalt thing of the, the asphalt, we all have a copy of the drawings.
We've got to get the asphalt and the concrete done first and then we'll come on. Anyway, got to have it on tape. Anyway, we can't, what I've done, I've got, we better wait till we get the concrete done before we bring in asphalt. We allowed, I think it's, God, me and Mike, was it 50 feet for bleachers, which Barbara's furnished the material.
Right.
To fix the bleachers. And there'll be four, four little sets of bleachers and then a walkway for the handicap. And the handicap, have y'all seen the drawings that Marty done?
Yes.
Is it in y'all's packet?
Yes, uh-huh.
Well, it's that plus the, the rest of the asphalt will be where the bleachers are set, so.
Yeah, so we, we had a bid from a guy who's bonded, who can do the work. The bid was, I think, $2700 or $2800.
Yeah.
And, but we're not sure if that's going to be the end, so that's why on the agenda it does say not to exceed $3,000 for this ADA required, required parking spots. Now, I can also share with everybody that the skate park has already been assessed by the ADA compliancy people in Texas. And we have, from the time of completion, we've got 180 days in order to, to get those, that access done.
Just keep me, keep me up on.
We will keep you on, we will definitely keep you in the loop. It's not a problem. Anybody have any questions?
Now, where are they? No, not yet.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Any, any possibility of using our, the 10K from the Kiwanis to, to cover this? Are we going to take it out of our existing funds?
Then that's a really good question. So we, I've not seen any of the bids for the landscaping yet, so I can't answer that.
Okay.
But it's a great question. I mean, the original thought was to do that, but... Any other discussion? Megan? No?
We ought to wait till we get the landscape bid.
And then are they also going to, lighting, is that going to be?
No, not at this time.
So we have no idea on that?
No, we'll talk about that in a second. Yep. Okay, thank you, Mike. Based on that, I also thought I would share with everybody that about 40 minutes before our meeting this evening, we had a private citizen that came up and has basically told us that they would support the $3,000 expenditure if we need it. So we have somebody who will cover that cost. They want to remain anonymous, but they did come up and basically said they saw it on the agenda and they're very willing to come forward and to put up the $3,000 for this ADA requirement for the parking spots and the ADA access to the Gumbertale City Skate Park, which is new news that they didn't have before the agenda was put together.
That's great.
Discussion? I think we need to vote on this.
Yeah.
Yep.
I might propose to go along with what Jim Osborne said. We may want to just table this until we get the, the full picture, meaning the landscaping costs and everything else. So I guess that would be my motion, is that we table it until either the next meeting or until we have a full, a better picture of the landscaping costs, any construction costs, as well as the parking.
So what's your motion?
That was it.
That was it?
That was it. I'd like to make a motion that we table this item until we get a better, until we get a better picture, a better estimate of the landscaping costs as well as any construction costs and discuss it at our next meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Slenderlin, yes.
Lindeman, yes.
Yes.
Damiano, yes.
Butler, yes.
Witten, yes.
I didn't mean to put you on the...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Item number five, discuss or take action to approve one of the two suggested skate park rule signs, the proposals that are, are in your packet. So I want to call to your attention, there are actually three pages that are in your packet, okay? There's the first one that, that I basically pulled off of a website and basically the rules are pretty simple and pretty comprehensive. The second page that you're looking at that starts with skate at your own risk and has a, a sign underneath of it, these skate park rules were also pulled off of a website, not in Texas, but basically in, in California. The third page that you're looking at is a suggestion that the rules would be pretty clear if we're able to follow them. There's simply 10 rules that are involved, and I think it's worth it for me to take the time to read this to you. So if you look at the Gumbertale City Skate Park rules. And it's kind of, this did come from a Texas skate park. So it says, "Texas Law Chapter 75 Civil Practices and Remedies Code limits the liability of a governmental unit for all damages arising directly from hockey, inline hockey, skating, inline skating, roller skating, skateboarding, rollerblading, paintball use, or soapbox derby use on the premises that the governmental unit owns, operates, and/or maintains for that purpose." Okay, very important, number one. Number two, know your limits and abilities. You're responsible for your own safety. Number three, skate park operating hours will be dawn to dusk. Number four, only skateboarders, inline skates and roller skates are allowed. All other uses are prohibited. Number five, safety first. Proper, safety equipment is required at all times, including helmets, proper shoes, knee and elbow pads, and wrist guards. Number six, this is a shared public park. Be respectful to the skate park and to others using the skate park. Number seven, we have a list of prohibited items. Alcohol, tobacco products, illegal substances, glass containers, and graffiti. Skate park will be closed until the graffiti is removed if it, if it happens to go on there. Number eight, if you see something, report it. Number nine, skate park and surrounding areas are being monitored 24/7. And number 10, all other park rules and ordinances apply. And then the underlying statement of have fun, be safe, and respect your fellow skaters is on the bottom of the sign. Mike?
I think that's good. Those are good rules, but also somewhere in there you need to let them know that this park shuts down at 11:00.
It says dusk to dawn.
Yes, all my lights, everything are timers and they shut off at 11:00.
It says dawn to dusk is, is on there.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. But that's part of our park rules, is that it shuts down at 11:00.
Yep. So as we take a look at these three pieces of paper that you have in front of you, the goal here is to, is to adopt one of these as the park rules. And then we need to get signage made. We've already gotten a bid on signage. The signs are about $90 apiece. They're going to be two by four, two foot by four foot long. There'll be two signs, one on each side of the entry, where we're going to have the benches so to make sure, or, and/or by the handicap parking spots and so that everybody's well a rule, very aware of the rules of the skate park. It's essential that we have rules posted.
This one's the winner, I think, the one you read because it has the Texas Law Chapter 75 and it covers everything that the other ones do, but I like this Texas Law Chapter 75.
Yep.
Page three.
Anybody would like, anybody like to make a motion?
Well, I move that we accept the Page Three, Texas Law Chapter 75 Skate Park Rules.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
My assumption is that what we're looking at here, there's a sample of a sign, so I'm assuming it's going to roll into something like this.
Correct.
Okay, that's all. That's it.
Any other discussion? All right. Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Slenderlin, yes.
Lindeman, yes.
Schiff, yes.
Damiano, yes.
Butler, yes.
Witten, yes.
Motion passes and we'll go get that done. Thank you. I appreciate it. Item number six, discuss or take action to receive an updated report on the demolition of Big Chief Landing and take action on the planned opening of the boat ramp for citizens of Gumbertale City. So very quickly, just an update on the demolition. Obviously, the demolition is complete. There were a lot of questions on the removal of making sure that everything was taken out of the lake. There were several people that were asking questions. We had people, citizens that asked a few questions as well that have been addressed. And I checked with the folks that did the demolition. Everybody is 100% happy with the demolition that went on. Everything is taken out of the lake. There are no posts. There's nothing left in the lake whatsoever. The only thing that's up there right now is the bar that's across on the opening of the boat ramp. Everything else is leveled. There was a little bit of discussion today about making sure that it's, that it's safe and as secure as it can be, which, you know, obviously we're going to work on. The other thing, we have posted signs up there today. Mike posted signs that we had made, basically telling folks, we, we printed six no diving signs because somebody was very concerned that somebody might dive off the side of the boat ramp. And we don't want anybody to be diving, so no diving. And then basically they're not responsible for any accidents or damages is the other signs that we have up there now. Okay? The planned opening for the skate park is going to be this Friday at noon.
It's in the ramp.
The ramp, sorry. Jeez, skate park going on. Thank you, Jim. For, the boat ramp will be this Friday at noon. I'd invite anybody that, that can attend to come out. We're going to have the ribbon cutting. We're going to have the, basically the bar taken off and we're going to start to open it up for our citizens. There are plans to do other things at that site later on to enhance it a little bit, but right now we'd really like to get it open now that the, now that the lake is full and we've got plenty of activity here on the weekends. So that's the updated report. Any questions?
I would like to also throw out there, we have those picnic tables at Lowe's, so we need to bring those down.
Yep. We'll get Mike to, you're going to drop, are you going to deliver them or do you want us to pick them up?
Well, I can deliver them, but it might take a day or two.
We need to fasten them to the ground.
Yeah, eventually they're going to have to put down.
So they don't, they don't go to the pickup.
Yep.
So before they're delivered, we need to have a plan with Mike to have the clamps to put that puppy in.
Somebody's going to steal them.
Well, no, we're, we're going to have clamps down. In fact, Rob already volunteered his guy to come over and put them down when we're ready to get them put down in the ground. Right? Mr. Ray?
Yeah, and if you need fasteners or whatever, we can provide those, so.
I think we'll need fasteners. And if you have big locks, we'll use those to, no, kidding. So, should be, should be pretty simple.
Steve, you're supposed to keep your comedy until the rock the park.
Well, the only other thing then is, since it's just white wood benches and, you know, they're wood, then I will talk to some of the vendors and see if we can get some paint donated or stained.
Great.
So that we can get them treated so they don't...
Great. Yep, so they don't rot out.
Exactly.
Yep, excellent. Thank you. Any other discussion?
No.
Anybody want to make a motion to, to receive this report?
I'll make a motion that we receive the report on Big Chief Landing demolition.
Second.
Motion and a second. Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Slenderlin, yes.
Lindeman, yes.
Schiff, yes.
Damiano, yes.
Butler, yes.
So I'll see you guys all out there on Friday at noon.
I'll be there.
Item number seven, discuss or take action to receive a report from East Tech Productions concerning a video production quote to enhance Gumbertale City and the Gumbertale City Economic Development Corporation. In your packet, there is a proposal, and this is a company that the previous board was working on with this East Tech Productions. It's basically to, for a, to create a video that's going to be used to promote the city and all of the good things that are within the city. And you can see on page number, I believe it's four, yeah, page number four, you can see the costs that are incurred with this proposal are roughly about $3,850. This is a gentleman that, that has called me no fewer than 25 times to talk about this project. He basically tells me that they were close to getting this done with the last board, but I'm just providing the information to you. I don't necessarily think that we have to, to vote to approve it or not approve it at this time. I think this is another item that we may want to table until we get a little more information.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this item until we get a little more information.
Okay.
Well, I'll be very clear. Part of the reason I'm saying this is I don't remember seeing this. I don't know if you do or not, Jim, do you?
Yeah, vaguely.
Okay. And I think a refresher would probably be good.
Well, I think it would be good for the guy to pitch it because just reading it doesn't give you the...
Yep.
No. And I'd like to see a sample of some city that they, that he's done, or two cities.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we table this item until we can get a full-blown presentation.
We got it all seconded. We're ready to vote.
We had a second?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, thank you.
Then y'all kept talking.
He's getting like Keith Butler now. He's right in there.
Any, any more discussion?
No.
Voting from my left.
Osborne, yes.
Lindeman, yes.
Lindeman, yes.
Schiff, yes.
Damiano, yes.
Butler, yes.
Witten, yes.
All right, thank you. Item number eight. So if you recall, this is something that we had discussed about a month ago. Included in your packet is a bunch of information regarding doing some marketing tools for the EDC. And it's basically marketing the EDC name. Dawn had put this together and I was going to call on her to discuss it this evening, but obviously she can't do that. So what is, what she basically is proposing is that, we've gone to a couple of events now where, and thanks to Michael Slenderlin, he protected us at the last event with his portable tent, which was greatly appreciated, otherwise we all would have fried. You're welcome. And we've, we've been surrounded by other people that usually have promotional things to give to the citizens and people who are attending. And so Dawn had put together this list of what she called her wish list of things that she would like to put together. So she had these all priced locally and all of the attachments are there so that you can look through them. I think the, one of the biggest expenses on there is the, the tent, because we'd like to, to get a tent that really has our logo and the Gumbertale City EDC, the EDC logo and also the Gumbertale City logo on it. So whether we do a two imprint, which means that you would print on one side or the other,[1788.23] we do a two imprint, which means that you would print on one side or the other, or a four imprint, where, four imprint, where you would print on all four different sides, um, it's up to us to decide how we want to go. The difference between the two is really nominal. Um, so we're looking, I, I set the, uh, bar at 5,600, uh, not to exceed 5,600. We do have this in our, uh, Business Development Fund that's available, um, to utilize, and so there are two different options. Uh, the option with the two imprint tent runs roughly 5,424, and with the four imprint tent, it's 5,575 dollars. So, uh, I think this is something that, long-term, we're gonna need. Uh, we have pens right now that we give out, and, uh, as I'm learning, more people are typing than penning. So...
I agree with you. We need to four, uh, four print one, because everything's about the glitz. I mean, Michael's tent worked great, but the problem was all the other tents had the, you know, the high-end printing on it, and the ones that looked low-quality only had a, you know, single color, and they just didn't have the grab.
Yep.
So, I'm, I'm for that.
So, are you making a motion, Jim?
I, yes, I am. I, let me get there. I move that we, uh, approve an expenditure not to exceed $5,600 for current and new business development marketing tools.
I have a motion.
Motion and a second?
Thank you.